Let me know, I'll be here.
Okay, so you already recorded, right?
Yes.
Perfect, so we will go ahead and get started because it's six oh nine and and we do appreciate everybody that's here. Um, we have um our our doctors, Dr. Pennington and Dr. Powell are on online. And we have our nurse supervisor, Ms. Dyson, we have an intern and one of our spectacular nurses. So um Two of our nurses, sorry, of course. And um and you know what, this is a great team and we want to talk to you tonight about school health and how important it is and how um how we learned during the pandemic that um you know, that we couldn't really function without our school health team. So we want to make sure we keep our robust um school health team. And I'll just introduce myself and then let everyone else introduce themselves and we'll get started. My name is Dr. Philip Potos and I am the Chief of Student Services.
Hello, I'm Myrna Dyson, I'm the Supervisor of the Division of School Health.
Okay, I guess I'll go now. My name is Dr. Karia Powell. I am the school physician and I'm also the CEO and CMO of Neighborhood Health Services Corporation and Services Union County.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Dr. Demetria Pennington. I am the Assistant CMO and the Chief of Pediatrics at Neighborhood Health.
Thank you. And Esther and Alvina.
Hi, I'm Alvina Lofters. I'm the school nurse at Cook Elementary and Pinnacle.
Esther.
Oh, poor Esther's in her Spanish place. We can't hear her. Esther is is one of our our veteran nurses who works at Booker. Um, and we can't hear her um right now, so. Sorry, Esther. So you know what, Dr. Powell, would you be able to talk a little bit more about um our relationship with the Neighborhood Health Center? I do know you you perform a um, you know, a vital um service for our community. And maybe we, you know, just can go on record with all the things that that do happen at our Neighborhood Health Center.
Absolutely. We've had a longstanding um relationship um with the district. It was the school physician and with the town of Plainfield as well, um providing uh health services for the community. So at the Health Center itself, we offer adult medicine, pediatrics, um OBGYN, dentistry, podiatry, HIV treatment and services, and behavioral health. So um we've been working with the district, like I said, it's been several years. We've been in business since nineteen sixty-nine in the in the District of Plainfield. And so we've been um have a longstanding partnership um with making sure not only just the children are healthy, but your parents and families are as well. And so we, many of us on this on this call have known each other for years. We have a fluid relationship and we're able to do what's needed to make sure you're keeping you're healthy and have any issues that you need addressed, taken care of.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, and I think you really underscored the part. We have a beautiful partnership with you and we know that anything that we need, we can reach out and ask um you guys. And I want to just encourage anyone who does watch this um to know that if you, the the Neighborhood Health Center is in in Plainfield. It's on Rock Avenue. We're off of Rock Avenue. And it is um always available, always open, and always accessible to everybody in our in our city. So um we, parents can bring your children there and parents can go there themselves. And and um we we just want to make sure that everyone knows that that service is available first and foremost.
And please let me give the website, let me give the website for those. Because it doesn't matter about your insurance status or your immigration status. You're able to get full comprehensive healthcare. So you can contact us at nine oh eight seven five three six four zero one. Or you can go to our website at www.nhscnj.org.
Perfect, perfect. And if you ever, and if if you have trouble with that, you can always reach out to um the Office of Student Services, Division of School Health, and we can also point you in the right direction as well. And um I just want to let our nurse supervisor, Ms. Dyson, give us give us a little overview of her um work as the Coordinator of All Things School Health. She, um we're lucky, we're so lucky to have Ms. Dyson. She is not only a veteran practitioner, but she also teaches school health at at King University. And she's phenomenal and well respected in her field, so um Ms. Dyson, Nurse Dyson, if you will.
Thank you, Dr. Philip Potos, that was some introduction. This is my twenty-fourth year working in Plainfield schools. I've been a nurse for many, many years. I absolutely love working in the school district. Um, I love public health, community health. I have many years' experience um in pediatric emergency room, adult emergency room, critical care, um and home care. So I'm from Plainfield, this is my home, and I don't know what else to say. I just love what I do, even after twenty-four years. I have a great team of nurses that I work with, and I always tell them I couldn't do this alone. Right, I could not do this alone. Right now, we are pretty well-staffed, there's a nurse in every building. If you go to our website, you will find their email and their phone numbers. And we did um make it through the pandemic, which was huge with the help of the Neighborhood Health Services Corporation, our Public Health Officer. It was really all hands on deck. We are in such a better place right now. And we are keeping our children and our staff healthy. Um, we we just take care of everybody. Our employees are happy, they have services available to them for physical and emotional well-being. And we're looking forward to moving on.
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing. And um you want to just highlight some of the the health services that are available um to students and when they are in school? What do they, what do they have access to?
Sure, I don't know if you want to answer, Ms. Gravestand has a hand up?
Oh, she does already, I'm sorry, where's that? Oh, she has her hand up or she has a chat?
Oh, maybe that's me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that was me.
Well, we welcome Ms. Gravestand and uh to our Town Hall and and we are going to have this live on our website, so we we are going to cover all our topics.
So um we, like I said, we do have a school nurse available in every building. The nurses are very um well-trained, able to care for every child. We do work closely, like we said, with the Health Center. If we have any questions or concerns, Dr. Pennington or Dr. Powell are always available to to us. As far as public health goes, I do have a relationship with Dr. Nazir from the Board of Health, and they are always available. So under the Division of School Health, we want to make sure our athletes are well and well taken care of and that they meet the standards to pass their physicals. Um, the nurses do screenings on our students, we do scoliosis screenings. We, one of our main um task is to make sure children have the immunizations that that are required to enter school. So uh right now, every every child in the state of New Jersey is eligible for New Jersey Family Care. The Health Center is very good at helping you with that application process. So we really want a hundred percent of all of our children enrolled in one of the New Jersey Family Care. Practitioners. That is really a big change for all children, so they can get the healthcare that they need. We do work with the doctors in the community. Um, we do have a lot of patients that come from private physicians. We call them up, trying to think, what else do we do? We encourage vaccinations for COVID. We still are following our COVID um our COVID cases, it's been pretty low relatively speaking. Parents will be notified if there is a COVID case in their bill building. If the the regulations have changed according to the CDC. But if there's a parent or a child that's been in close contact with someone, they will be notified by the school nurse. The, that information is confidential, so you will not be told who the positive cases, but you will be notified and know the precautions that you need to take.
Absolutely, and and I know, I know you always talk a lot about the importance of having a um health home or a um a medical home base. And and maybe um Dr. Powell wants to kind of elaborate on that for us as well. Like, why is it important for um all of our our children to have that pediatrician or that physician that knows um exactly what their needs are?
I think that's critical for everyone involved, that you have a primary care physician in a in a medical home. Because that is your person that gets to know you the best. That is someone that's charged with getting to know everything about you, knows what your baseline and your normals are for your children. And so when things are are, when they get sick, they know the details about you. Instead of having episodic care, where you go to the ER or an urgent care center. When you have a primary care home, they develop an actual relationship with you. And they can advocate for, on your behalf, with specialists when you do go into the hospital. It's very critical that you have someone that is knows you, that's speaking for you and can make arrangements for you when you need help outside with any um kind of other types of care. And so especially for pediatrics, you want to stay with the same home that watches your child grow. So if there's changes in their growth and their development, and there's small little things about them that might not um fall into the normal for that for your child, then your medical home is the best place and the best kind of environment for you to be in, to notice those changes and to be able to address them um when they come or as early as possible.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And and I know, and Myrna mentioned it too, but we, you know, our nurses are very in touch with all of the doctor, local doctors, of course, our Neighborhood Health Center. But it it is that relationship so that they can pick up the phone and talk to the doctors and and know, um of course, with the permission with the of the parents, but we can take care of the children much more um specifically with that, when that's in place. So let's talk a little bit about vaccinations, because that's on everybody's mind right now. What are the um current recommendations for uh COVID and flu vaccines for for our students? Um, Dr. Powell, if you will.
And actually, I'll see, I'll start to um Pennington to to join in with me um with that question as well. So Dr. Pennington, are you um able to step in with this question?
Yes, so the current recommendations, every child six months and older are recommended to get a flu vaccine, the current flu vaccine for this season. If it's the first time that they're getting a flu vaccine, if they're under nine, they will have to get two doses uh one month apart. Otherwise, they just get one dose. And then as far as the COVID vaccine, there is a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four COVID vaccine is updated vaccine for the current strains, and it's recommended to get one dose of of that, with the booster.
And and they can come down to the Neighborhood Health Center to get that. I know we've offered a few clinics um for parents. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we had a line going out the door at the Plainfield High School. So people I know are still looking for those um vaccines. And I maybe, were you there, Ms. Pilis? And you're nodding your head, were you at that? That I, we had a great, our Family Success Center partnered with the city and we had um that offer. But we do want to support everybody being as healthy as possible, so.
And I also wanted to stress that we have a relationship with the Health Department as well. So there is an immunization um clinic that is being, um we partner with the Health Department and we offer those services there as well. So there is a lot of continuity of care going on between the city, the and the and the uh school and the Health Center as well.
That's an excellent point.
And Dr. Powell, I think um the immunization clinic is going to start, we got something from Maria? Esther, right, December fifth?
December fifth, yes, next week, that's every Tuesday and Thursday from eleven to three thirty.
Oh, wonderful. We'll have to make sure we get that on our website too and get that out to the parents. Um, because that's, that's what people are looking for. When you watch the news, they they really are, you know, pushing that that's how we're going to get through this. And your point about the continuity of care is really, is really well-taken in Plainfield because it is a seamless connection between the um city and and the Neighborhood Health Center and the district. We're always in constant com- communication and um there's no not confusion, and that's really important. Okay, so let's see here, we have some questions that um we we know want, need to be answered. Some some things have been touched on already, but Nurse Dyson, maybe you want to talk about how you handle medical emergencies at school? What are the no, the protocols for notifying our parents?
So it depends on exactly what the emergency is. Do we call the parent first or nine-one-one? Um, if it's a life-threatening emergency, we will call nine-one-one. And an employee will accompany that student to the hospital while we're trying to get to get in touch with the parents. Um, medical emergencies include things like um anaphylaxis from an allergen that was eaten, asthma, seizures, uh some students have diabetes, which is why it's important that we have orders for those students. Um, if they need an EpiPen, we ask parents to please make sure the doctor fills out a food allergy plan. We do have a relationship with our food um provider. And there's forms to parents and the doctor can fill out, so they will know what foods are allowed. If your child is diabetic or if your child has food allergies, and what can we give all um as an alternate? So say if your child has um allergic to milk and they need soy milk. We need a doctor's order, we'll send it over to Machio's, and the cafeteria workers will make sure that your child gets the soy milk. So things like that, but we do handle emergencies quite well, and we do call nine-one-one right away. And then we will notify parents.
Yeah, that's 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 true, and we do that very well. And it is, I'm glad you mentioned the relationship with Machio's because nutrition is so important. And um they are completely open to any special diets that are needed and um very, very valuable. What is, what does medication at school look like? What is, what kind of, and and maybe the doctors and you can can kind of compare, like what kind of medication should be administered at school? Um, which ones are better at home and what are, what is the policy that you follow when you're doing that?
So we need um a doctor's order to give medication in school. Under our standing orders, we do have permission to give a one-time dose to some students if their parents sign the form. The form is available on the website under School Health. And parents, please sign that, it's a one-time dose for Tylenol or Motrin. So if uh someone comes to school and they have a toothache, if they have a simple headache. Um, Dr. Powell, what else is covered under your meds? That we try to keep the children in school. So as long as it's not anything too serious, abdominal pain, we will not give medicine for. Because that could be something else going on, we don't want to mask those symptoms. But we do have that one-time order, but the parents must sign the form and give it to your school nurse. Um, other medications?
Go ahead, first time for for allergy, if you're having an allergic response, that the nurses are allowed to give that first time dose of EpiPen in an emergency. Um, so we are able to address those issues. Now, if you're, when we're going to establish um issues like an asthma, if you have some allergies or if your child has seizures, a history of seizures, then we would need for your doctor to give us a plan that we will keep uh at place for your child. And that will give specific tailored instructions on what to do in case of, because tho- those things need to be tailored to your child. Those are not generic, covered under the generic nurse's orders. And so you would need, if you know your child has any of those kind of chronic conditions, then you would have your 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 doctor to fill out a plan. And that's submitted to the school at the beginning of the year, and the nurses reference that plan to manage your child.
Right, and we have um a little sign at the top of um our student information system that alerts us all staff members to that fact. And um it is really important to keep those updated. I know and our nurses are very good at following up and making sure that all those things, all those plans are updated. So let me see, I'll go back to the questions. What's, what, how do we know that the the school is as clean and sanitary as as we, it should be?
So I I'll speak to that one. Um, every night, all the rooms are cleaned, deeply cleaned. If there is a COVID case that we find out, uh the CDC regulations state if it's less than twenty-four hours, we do close that room. And after twenty-four hours, it gets disinfected. Even if um we have a child or an adult who we're highly suspicious of, that maybe it's COVID, we'll still close that room and have it deeply cleaned. But our custodial staff is doing a great job, they respond to the nurses right away, they respond to me right away. So we do um disinfect, deep disinfect whenever there's a COVID case.
Yeah, I think that was one of the the benefits of COVID to schools. We learned a lot about how um important the deep cleaning is, and we also got some tools that we didn't use to have. You know, the spraying um machines that kind of missed over, we never had that before, and now we do have that available to us, so that's wonderful.
And we have the air purifiers too.
Right, all the, all the classrooms have air purifiers, our HVAC um systems have been updated in many, many buildings. On maybe all buildings, I should say, I should, yeah, because I think that was pretty much um a given. So. Um, let's see, I know that mental health is um a big concern now. And and um, Dr. Powell, you mentioned that you have a behavioral uh mental health supports um at the Health Center. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
So we um, we're partnering with Bridgeway um Behavioral Health Services to offer a comprehensive, integrated behavioral health um services for not just children, but for the um family as well. And so we, with this partnership, we're able to provide medications, evaluations, and treatment through the Health Center, um partnering with Bridgeway. And so again, you can reach us through our website, you can reach us through my calling if there's any concerns or needs. And we're also vigilant on screening people um when they come in for their visits to kind of detect if there's anything there, not all the time, you may know that there's something wrong. Sometimes you think that this, that this is just normal, especially with your children. What, how do you know when your child is having um above um above-average responses to things? And that's why it's important to be vigilant about yearly or annual exams and regular um visits because you pick up on things and there's, we can screen for and detect anything with behavior developmental um and behavioral health um issues. And I know that there's some programs we have at the school too. Um, I know Myrna um was talking about um a lot of programs we have at the school.
And Bridgeway was one of our partners too, and I think it's it's important that you reminded us about the medical home because that's where you would notice those those changes, um whether it be in mood or personality as well. Um, but but Nurse Dyson, if you want to um expand on what what our nurses, we're all connected. So in Student Services, the nurses, the social workers, the child study team, um the family liaisons, the behaviors, everybody's all on the same team and we have um a very fluid kind of um, you know, notification system. So and any nurse can pick up the phone immediately if they suspected that there's something going on with a student in mental health. And then we get our social workers right on board, we have school psychologists available and um, you know, access to a lot of different services. Myrna, you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
So um, we know children, they may have a somatic complaint, this hurts, the stomach aches, the headaches. When really could be something emotional going on. The nurses are very good at picking that up and will will refer that child to the school social worker. Anything that has to do with their mental or emotional well-being. We also have school-based youth services which are available, they offer counseling. We have, right now, we have two student assistance coordinators to help with our students with substance use and abuse. Um, we are partnered with Bridgeway. And Beth, I don't know if you want to go into our social emotional learning?
Right, we have a whole curriculum to kind of address that too, to be on the front lines, like less reactive and more proactive about um, you know, how every classroom, you know, has a visit from their social worker and and is as is, you know, taught some strategies for for social and emotional wellness. So um we're, we're trying to, you know, take on this issue from every front, if you will.
And and we've seen so much more since the pandemic, right? I don't know, I don't know, Dr. Powell, if you think that the
Yes.
The Powell accentuated it or caused it?
Yeah, there's, there's, there has been such a heightened, I think, awareness too. I think one of the things, the isolation um that occurred during the pandemic it particularly affected the children, especially your more outgoing children or that feed off of a need, social interaction. This pandemic was very hard on them. And so we want to be sensitive even now because we we've moved past it, but these things kind of built on each other. And we are noticing that the children are really having a lot of um behavioral health um fallout from that isolation. So be hyper vigilant with your child, um noticing that there's any changes in behavior um when they're starting to isolate themselves a little more, or they're not talking as 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 they should with you. Um, and again, social media plays a big role. You know, I beg of you to make sure that you are aware of what is going on with your child and social media. And a lot of times, they're talking to the internet about how they feel, and you wouldn't know at all um what's happening. So I I I really, if you have um any, uh make yourself aware of the parental controls on social media because they play a role in your um child's be, um health and be, and their well-being. So taking a role with that as well. So we've really seen that this has spiked, there's been a huge spike, and there unfortunately has been an increase in suicide amongst children during the pandemic. So we really want to um get um, be, you know, be proactive uh in in screening and talking and have conversation and picking up on any nuances and changes that the children may be having.
Excellent, excellent points. And um, you know, for the parents listening, if you don't know how to reach out to the social worker, it might not be as familiar. There is always a button when you call your school to get to the nurse. And like I said, the nurse can connect you with what whatever is needed. So um if it's just easier to remember that, talk to your doctor, talk to your nurse, and they'll get you into the right um place for mental health. I want to pause a minute because we have an iPhone seven and make sure that they, iPhone seven who has joined us that maybe they need interpretation, I'm not sure. If 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 you need um iPhone seven, welcome, and we're glad you're joining us. If you need to hear this in Spanish, um I believe you can click on something at the bottom, it says language interpretation available, click here to get started. I don't know how to say that in Spanish, but. Okay, so anyways, yeah, well Esther, Esther, when she was talking, it wasn't coming through, so I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Joseline, that would be appreciated if you want to say that, thank you.
Yeah, I can translate it. Hola, este, el que está en el video si habla español, yo también hablo español. Eh, el, estoy diciendo esto, que dice iPhone siete. Si quiere traducir algo, tenemos a una persona que puede traducir todo lo que está haciendo esta junta. Pero nomás haganos saber si puede decirlo en voz alta o lo puede decir en el, en el chat también, es decir, Rita.
Thank you. So do we, uh how will we know if she goes over? I don't know if Esther, if Esther can see, Esther, you'll you'll see her if she comes over there, okay?
Yeah.
I think so.
Still can't hear Esther.
I let um iPhone seven know that if he or she wants to type it in the chat, if she's more
Then, perfect, then we'll know if we should, and I don't see anything yet, but, okay, perfect. Okay, well, you know, we do want to pause, we we're already forty minutes into this, into our event, and we only really have about ten more minutes left. So I just want to pause in case we have a um, this Gravens, Tamar, Gravensand or iPhone seven, or if anyone has a question um that they want to talk about. Before we, we have a few more topics we can cover, but I don't want to take up parents' time if they do want, have something they need to ask. Okay. Well, so, we, go ahead. Go ahead, Myrna.
No, 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 I was just saying, I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns related to school health? Nursing, athletics?
Well, we do get a lot of questions about how you handle Well, we do get a lot of questions about how you handle um confidential information. If you want to explain that, make parents feel a little bit uh more comfortable about the how we we do that.
So um, the nurses do handle the health um information confidentially unless you're unless it's a life and death situation. We'll let teachers know of any severe um anaphylaxis allergies that a child may have, because that can be a life or death situation. In Genesis, the nurses notes are all kept separate from what the teachers may document. Our documentation is separate. Um, and we do really honor that. If your child has any kind of um contagion, say if they had COVID, we would not identify your child by name. Okay, that's confidential. We would just say there's been one case in the building. We don't tell the teachers um their name. We don't tell other students their name. I know a lot of parents do tell teachers, that's your right, that's your option. But as nurses, we really um maintain confidentiality for our students.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And just to assure you, and that that translates um into our work as well. So we with our electronic medical records, we limit any access to your your child records. So no, not everyone has access to records. We are very mindful of the conversations that we're having about your child's healthcare. This is all protected on under HIPAA and FERPA. FERPA, I always get the the acronyms all, you know, messed up. But there are laws in police that protect that we must follow, that protects your medical um privacy. And so we're not allowed to just have open discussions about your child in the hallway. Or just to, you know, leave the paperwork sitting on the desk, or there's a lot of rules and that are in place, and we follow them to protect your health information. And so even when we are uh are working with each other, we're mindful that we only share what is needed to who it's needed. So it's not a blanket um release of your information. It's very targeted uh to make sure we just get the help that you need or your child needs.
Perfect. Good point. So I know one of the district's um biggest initiatives is to make sure everybody comes to school. Attendance is really important for academic success. So we're always telling everybody to come to school, teachers and students alike. Um, when should a child stay home? Um, when is it? When is it appropriate, if you will?
Dr. Powell, you want to start that one?
Um, absolutely. Well, one of the first things you always think about is fever. You know, that is your big sign. Um, if your child is having a fever, um, you definitely want to keep them home. Do not send them to school. Or one of the old and oldie and goodie tricks is to load them up with a little Motrin and send them in and think we, you know, you know, we understand, gotta go to work. You you put them on uh Motrin and hope for the best. But really, if they're having a a temperature, that's a sign that they're they're sick and they have something more than likely that is spread, can be spread to others. And to contain that and to keep people healthy, if everybody follows this rule, it reduces the spread of illness in the school. So if your child has a fever and you take their temperature, it's above a hundred point four at home, you want to keep them home, you can treat them at home, but they should be fever-free for forty-eight hours without medication before you send them back to school. And if your child is um running a temperature for more than forty-eight hours, please call your primary care provider, get an appointment with them to get them um seen and evaluated. Because it's a lot of times you can shorten the amount of time your child is sick, if we know what we're dealing with. If there's some medication that we can be given that can shorten the illness, it it's important that you get the child seen and evaluated as soon as possible. When I just talked that to Myrna.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. So um, I do want to say you mentioned a hundred point four. However, that can vary for every student. They may have a temperature of a hundred. Not now and not feel well. So sometimes uh moms and dads, we have to put together the whole picture. Am I right, Dr. Powell?
Absolutely.
Right.
Or if you, you know, i- if your child has got a, if your child's uncomfortable, if they're coughing and they're uncomfortable. So if they've got a, you know, an occasional cough, we understand. But if they're constantly coughing, you know that's going to be uncomfortable for your child. That's also spreading illness in the classroom. The child is not going to be in a bright um frame of mind to be learning at that time. So you want to be mindful of that. Um, if they're complaining of a sore throat or if they're a headache or their stomach ache, and you know that they really are not looking well, keep them home. It's always better to let them um uh stay home instead of trying to get them to come to school under those circumstances.
Exactly. And um, we still will ask you to get a COVID test if they have two of those symptoms. We need to remember that COVID has not gone away. It's still here. Um, two of those symptoms deserve a COVID test. Any cough, shortness of breath deserves a COVID test. So um, we know you can order some from the government for free. I think they just increased it to eight, did I hear that? Right? Um, I'm not sure of the website. But there are, it, you know, tests are still available. So please, um, you know, nowadays, people think it's a cold, right? We're coming into flu season. It's a cold. And and this is true for adults, too. They come to work. And then if it's COVID. And now we've exposed maybe a whole classroom, classmates. You know, and it's, we just really have to be conscientious about it and be mindful and fair to other people. Because as, you know, children may not be affected so much, but older people may be. Okay, it can still be very dramatic.
Right, that's absolutely right. We can't let our guard down with the COVID. And and I do like what Dr. Powell said about parent and you about parents knowing their kids. I know my son always got an ear infection, and I could I could tell when his hands were burning up, right? He would be pretty fine doing his thing. And then all of a sudden, he'd start acting weird, and I would touch his hands. I'm like, oh, that's an ear infection. He got it again.
Oh.
And as soon as he got that antibiotic, then he was better. So it is really important to catch it, not wait, and to try to, you know, to follow these symptoms. Again, the importance of a medical home, so. These are all um great tips. And I just, you know, I I want to pause again to see if any parents on the on the call have um any questions, any any concerns. Um, you can raise your hand, or you can add something in the chat. Um, we are, everyone on this call, your school nurses, your our our school doctors, Dr. Pennington, Dr. Powell, the Neighborhood Health Center, our nurse supervisor, Office of School Health. We are all here um to make sure that that our that our whole school community stays healthy and has what they need to um be to thrive. And, you know, we know communication is is the most important part of that. And we we our doors are always open. There's no question that um we haven't heard or is is weird. All questions are good, so.
Right.
If anyone, if you guys want to have your last words and imparting what the what's the most important thing you want everyone to walk away from when they view this video, because people will view it. I I know that um virtual became a thing, and then so did asynchronous. So people like to be able to touch, go to a website to look at a video rather than and and I I like to listen to things rather than read them to at the end of the day, so.
Yes, I'll, yeah, I'll jump in. Um, don't don't let your you not having insurance keep you from getting medical care. So there are options for you, and we are here at Neighborhood Health for you to um be seen and to be cared for and and as a medical home. I can't stress it enough, regardless of whether you have insurance, regardless of your immigration status, you we will give you um be your doctor, and you can have a home with us to get comprehensive, top-of-the-line care. We've got laboratory on site as well. We've got clinical nutritionist um on site. We've got doctors and nurses who specialize in diabetes and hypertension. So we um and and so please, 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 um, make sure you get regular care. Don't wait until you get sick. And then want to address it there. Um, have that home so that you have that person to to help you navigate through this, to keep you and your family healthy.
Good, good advice. Good advice. Nurse Dyson?
Well, um, I just want to say thank you for those who joined us tonight. One thing I would like to um expand on is please make sure your child has all of their vaccines required for school. Um, the nurses are going through the paperwork now. Um, please, please, please make sure that they have their vaccines. Another thing I just wanted to bring up regarding sports physicals for those in middle school and high school, please remember, we do not do paper copies anymore. It is done through final forms. Everything is uploaded there. The nurses will sign off on it. Um, our school physician will sign off on it. If things are missing, please look for an email. Okay, if you're wondering why you your child is not cleared, the system will automatically send the child and um the parent a email saying this is missing or that is missing. So to move things along in a timely manner, please um upload everything once a year. When you go to your doctor, when you take your child to the doctor for the annual physical, take the sports form with you, take the health history form with you. And just upload it once it's filled out every year. It becomes habit. And it saves a lot of time. So when practices start, they're ready to go, cleared and ready to go. That physical is good for three hundred and sixty-five days.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good advice as well, good advice as well. So we do thank everyone for for listening. And um a- again, thank you, um, Dr. Powell, Dr. Pennington, and our nurses for tuning in, and our intern, and our parents. Um, we we're we're happy to do this all together, and um our door is always open. So that concludes our town hall on school health. And uh, we look forward to hearing from everybody.
Great, thank you.
And thank you, Amy, for running this show, and you'll get take the recording and send it to us, and we will have it uploaded on the website by next week.
No problem. Everyone, have a good night.
All right.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Bye-bye.